The blessing boxes for people who may need some foods. And I was going to have her talk about that for just a minute, but since she's not here, I'm going to do the prayer. Everybody bow your heads. Lord, we thank you for us getting here safely, even if we're not on time. We thank you for this day and the beautiful weather that we had. We thank you for our administrators, our teachers, our custodians, our children, and the fantastic things that are going on within the school systems. We thank you for your son, Jesus. Amen. So, now we're going.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales. Thank you, Mr. Tidball. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
We did add today a EA from Laverne Middle School, so just so everyone's aware.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, Vaughn rather, and thank you, Ms. Darby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We do have three that signed up for public comment. And when I call your name, please come up to the podium. First up, we have Leigh Meisner.
Hello. Hi. Good evening, Chair, Board members, and district leaders. My name is Leigh Meisner, and I'm the proud mom of three McFadden students. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for the thoughtful leadership you bring to every decision affecting Rutherford County students. Last December, our PTO was honored to host many of you, as well as some of our commissioners, for breakfast at McFadden. It was a great opportunity to share both our pride in our school and our vision for its future, and to give you a closer look at the place our students and teachers call home every day. We appreciated the chance to share with you McFadden's strengths and challenges that make our goals so important. We're grateful for the board's continued interest, support, and open dialogue about McFadden's needs. Those conversations have helped bring us to this point tonight. As you prepare to vote on moving forward with the process of purchasing the five adjacent properties behind our current building, I want to express our strong support. Even if a new or renovated school is still years away, this acquisition is an important first step. It strengthens safety, provides room for thoughtful growth, and gives our district flexibility to plan for the future. Our current building, full of history and charm, is showing its age. The beautiful classic steps that have welcomed students for almost 80 years can no longer be used for students to enter the building in the morning because the main level floors lack the stability needed for the new weapons detection system to function properly. Instead, our students now must enter through the basement to start their day. It's a small example, but it represents something larger. This structure, for all its character, was simply not built to meet the demands of today's students or the safety standards of a modern school. We've stretched every inch of this building to continue providing an excellent education, but it's no longer a structure that fully supports the needs of children in 2025. At McFadden, we don't complain, we adapt. Our teachers, staff, and families continue to make it work every day, day after day. But the issues are growing, and our taxpayer dollars would serve the district better by investing in a long-term solution: purchasing land and redefining the school's layout, rather than continuing to apply costly Band-Aids to an aging structure. Owning the surrounding land gives the district options: safer designs, modern learning environments, and even immediate improvements, such as relocating our front playground that currently sits on a busy street corner to a safer place behind the school. We understand that large projects like this unfold over time. By the time new plans come to life, many of our own children may have moved on. But we care deeply about McFadden's future because it has given so much to our families and to the Rutherford County as a whole. Your continued support allows us to imagine the kind of future McFadden students truly deserve. Thank you.
Next, we have Elizabeth Chandler.
My name is Liz Chandler, and I'm a proud parent of two McFadden students. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the families, teachers, staff members, and future McFadden families who care deeply about this school and its future. While the standard of learning at McFadden remains extraordinary, the building itself tells a different story. As you may recall, after being rebuilt three times, the current structure was built in 1939, and that age shows. The building has served this community well, but it now comes with growing maintenance demands: multiple costly repairs due to wear, water damage, and retrofitted accessibility features that don't quite meet modern needs. The vote to move forward with the acquisition of the five properties behind our current building is about more than just expanding land. It's about protecting our legacy and creating room to dream. When the time comes to rebuild or renovate, the additional space would allow McFadden to finally offer facilities to our students who have never had access to things like a stage or an auditorium, or perhaps even a full-size gym. It would also give the school immediate access to Bluff Avenue, allowing us the ability to more safely and efficiently redirect traffic since our entire school population are car riders. These aren't just upgrades, they're investments in the full student experience. As a parent-teacher organization, we are committed to maximizing every McFadden student's potential while doing everything we can to make sure that the facility challenges do not disrupt the education of our current or future students. Moving forward with these property contracts brings our goal one step closer to reality. While I speak on behalf of the McFadden families and staff, I'd also like to note that my own two children will have moved on from McFadden by the time any projects on the property have reached completion. Like many McFadden parents, both here tonight and watching at home, I recognize that my children may not directly benefit from these facility upgrades, but this does not lessen my determination to see this project through. Attending McFadden has been a giant blessing for our family, and I am personally excited about the thought of a newer renovated school building, which will give additional families that same opportunity to experience the same privilege. As a PTO, we believe it's our responsibility to ensure that future McFadden students have the same, if not better, opportunities than our own children. On behalf of our families and staff, we would like to thank you for taking the time to thoughtfully consider the steps to securing McFadden's bright future. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Karina Maldonado. I think that's Karina Maldonado. She's not here today? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Next, we have middle school rezoning.
All right, so the public that is watching, just so that everyone has an idea of kind of what we've been doing the last couple of years. This started in the fall of 2022. We began working with RSP to give us district enrollments and really help set us on a trajectory of success for the next few years. We have gone from rezoning our elementary schools with the opening of Poplar Hill Elementary this year to rezoning our high schools last year with the additions at Smyrna, Riverdale, Oakland, and in this upcoming year with Laverne. And middle school rezoning takes place next year. We did pass a preliminary middle school rezone plan in December of 2023 with a caveat to revisit at least six months before implementation so that we would have the ability to look at new growth trends. Before we get into that, I did want to go over just a very quick analysis of what our board spent about six and a half hours looking at on Tuesday. I'm not going to spend six and a half hours going over this. I'm just going to go over a couple highlights so that everyone has an idea of what we were looking at. So give me just a second to get where I'm going, to give a quick summary. All right, so here is our enrollment takeaway. And so our enrollment takeaway this year, we are down 149 students from this point last year. We have a lower kindergarten class, and then we also went to a four-by-four for our high school students, which increased the opportunity for students to graduate early. And so that gives us kind of a one-time shot to lower our enrollment at the high school level, but that'll, of course, increase. Another, looking the opposite direction, is that most grade levels are going to continue to grow in size as our cohorts move in the system, so our grades are going to continue to grow in size. Our graduating senior class does remain larger than our incoming kindergarten class. That is always going to be the case for us. So for our county commissioners that watch, we have a sister school system of Murphysboro City. As long as there are two school systems, there's always going to be a smaller kindergarten class than a graduating senior class because of two school systems. Live births in Rutherford County have increased, and so that is a continuing trend for us. The next five years, all grade size averages are projected to continue to increase, and the district maintained a positive net gain of incoming students each of the last three years. So we expect that to continue. So enrollment's going to continue. So now let's look a little bit further at what is going on at each grade band. So now let's look at our, sorry, it's not where I wanted to go. When we are looking at these, there's a couple, and this is all attached to our agenda, there's a, looking at our projections at each grade band, you're going to see a number that said, or a word says reside. That's how many students actually reside in this area. Then a section that says attend, how many students actually attend the school, and then how many actually reside and attend. We do have 10 choice seats at each school. Employees have a zone exemption that they can choose to attend at a school. So how many people reside in that area? How many people attend? You have people who may choose other options. Maybe they go to a homeschool, private school. So the number of people that reside in that area is going to be higher than the number of people who actually attend the school. The other option you're going to see or number is the capacity, how, what is the capacity of each building? Some good news, you're going to look at elementary. Before we opened and rezoned, and I know rezoning is painful, no one likes to do it. I know our board hates voting on it because it disrupts families. I hate counting all the numbers because it disrupts families. You're going to see anything that's shaded in that orangish peach color was overcrowded. And then as we moved into rezoning this year, 25, 26, 26, 27, just about all of that goes away. And so I credit the board for that because they made the difficult decision to rezone. We do have Brown's Chapel Elementary that we probably rezoned too many kids out of, so we're going to have to revisit that with Stewart's Creek Elementary. But we have been able to alleviate all of our overcrowding except for Stewart's Creek Elementary. You'll see Last Cassus by 2930 does get a little bit overcrowded, but you're looking at their capacity of 665, and they're at 682. And so they're going to be fine. We'll just continue to watch that and look at those zones. However, looking, and you'll see green, we're good at the elementary level. Stewart's Creek Elementary, though, gets to 1785 by the year of 2030, '31. We have the Lee Road property that we'll probably need to look at, a three-school complex by the end of that time. Stewart's Borough Elementary is at 855. By the end of 2030, '31, they're at 866. So again, above capacity, but not anything that we're overly concerned about. But it is going to be my recommendation that we rezone some of Stewart's Creek back to Brown's Chapel. We have four, 500 empty seats at Brown's Chapel, and we'll be looking at those proposals in the next couple of weeks. The other one to look at is Walter Hill and Wilson. Wilson is a much larger building, 975. The enrollment is projected to shrink over the next couple of years, while Walter Hill is projected to grow just a little bit. So we may want to look at a couple neighborhoods here. But overall, only capacity challenges are Stewart's Creek and Stewart's Borough, which is just above 10. So elementary looks good.
Can you go back to Stewart's Borough, you said?
So over by capacities, 855, it's going to be at 866. At reside, and then you'll see attend is actually at 828. So we're looking at how many people actually live in the zone versus how many people are attending in it. So attend, based on our current model, it would be under.
That's because there's a new subdivision in that area.
Yeah. So that's why it's going to grow a little. All right, so then let's get, and then your choice schools are a little bit different. Our charter schools, and then Thurman Francis, again, you don't have a zone for those schools. It's across the district, so it's just how many people attend. So it goes into the overall number. Middle school is not pretty, and so we have not rezoned yet, but these projections do take into account the new Poplar Hill Middle School. We are the proud owners, owners may be the weird word, of the two largest middle schools in the state: Blackman Middle School and Rockville Middle School. Blackman Middle School right now is a little bit over 1770. You'll see in the zone, there are 1,906, but only 1,776 attend. As we go through the years with Poplar Hill Middle opening, they still stay above the capacity of 1,568. So what we are going to be working on is to rezone a little bit more of our projection away out of Blackman Middle. Christiana Middle, same thing, they're going to be over projection. Laverne Middle is below projection. And so something that I've been working on the last two days is something that should be exciting for the Laverne area is that right now, and I'm going to pull up the map, this is the current zone, I believe. Let me make sure. Where's this, 26, 27? This is the current approved zone for next year. Right beside Laverne Middle, so Laverne Middle's over here. This section right across Murphysboro Road goes to Rock Springs Middle, all the way down into Smyrna. The zones that I'm working with RSP right now is going to be able to take a lot of Laverne proper and move it into Laverne Middle School, which is going to be very good for Laverne to be into Laverne. And so this whole area should be able to go to Laverne. This area, I think there's only one student that lives in this whole part. That one student will be able to go to Laverne, but a lot of this will be able to go to Laverne as well. And so that'll be able to do a couple things. It'll get Laverne into Laverne to utilize that space, but it's also going to allow us to alleviate some overcrowding at Rock Springs Middle School as well. And so that'll allow us, you'll see the capacity's 1,400. We only get to 1,108. We're at 1,064. I don't necessarily want that Laverne or any of our schools to be that close to capacity, but that helps. Oakland Middle, 1,440, very close to capacity. You'll see Poplar Hill, we are opening large. It has zeros because it's not open. We're opening it above 1,100 with a capacity of 1,200. It is right beside Shelton Square, so Shelton Square will finish filling that up along with another development by the time that it opens. Its reside and attend is exactly the same because we do not yet, with it not being open, don't have a percentage yet of how many people actually attend versus reside yet. You'll see Rock Springs Middle on the northwest quadrant of the county is a huge growth section, so we are dropping it quite a bit. But even after dropping it quite a bit, it jumps back well over capacity in five years. So we're going to look at some of that as well, and I'll talk more about that. At the middle school level, and then we'll get to Rockville Middle, second-largest middle school in the state. Currently, it's over 1,639. This was back at the beginning of October. And it gets back over 1,600 even with Poplar Hill opening. The issue with Rockville Middle School is that it does have extra classrooms, does not have an extra gym like our other schools that have an addition, and it does not have any extra bathrooms. And so it is still core capacity for only 1,200 students. And so that's tough for the administration and teachers and students at that school. Rocky Fork Middle is not getting to capacity even on this projection except for one year. Siegel Middle, with Oakland Middle having so many seats nearby, we're trying to get it back under capacity. Smyrna Middle, we are getting close to capacity with some of these moves. Stewart's Creek Middle, it shows you we're going to need another middle school at the Lee Road property eventually. And then our other spot that we have a lot of room is Whitworth Buchanan. And so our capacity challenges are going to be Rockville, Stewart's Creek, and still Blackman that we showed up here. So middle school has a whole lot, and we'll come back to that in just a minute. Real quick, high school. High school shows the need for our, I say north end, but our northwestern end high school needing at the Lee Road property that we have purchased. You will see by 2030, 2031, and why I hope that we ask for a high school in the next six months' design fees, that by 2030, '31, we'll have a campus built for $2,189, that'll be at $2,859. And then Stewart's Creek High School will be at $3,114 for a building of 2,338. And so that shows you the need for that school on the Lee Road property. Outside of that, and that would then also relieve a little bit of Smyrna and allow you to shift a little bit of Rockville down towards Blackman as well. So that school site will help us alleviate high school. You'll see at the high school level, we had a lot more peach-shaded colors. We are a lot more dire straits without those additions. We need that next high school to be able to alleviate that crowding. Last thing I wanted to cover is just our overall kind of conclusion of what we are looking at. And this is the part that I think is really good for everyone to see. In our next five years, we're projected to add 964 elementary school students, 1,944 middle school kids. That's why adding the 1,100 seats at Poplar Hill is not enough. And 2,561 high school students, which is why the one high school complex is not enough. Overall, 5,489 kids. That projection is actually a little bit down than where it was from a couple of years ago. So it is definitely following with what you're seeing, the nationwide trend. I think it's scary to see that a 10% projection is down, but that is a downward projection for us. Our next task, and kind of where I want direction from the board, is what I'm looking at right now is, we had on a couple of our areas, and I'll show those first, that we, a couple small areas, you're going to be able to see them, they're, you can see two colors. Right here, we were moving these areas from Laverne Middle to Smyrna Middle. With Laverne Middle being under capacity, my recommendation's going to be to move them back to Laverne so that they can stay there. We were moving these from, just giving you a quick highlight, and I'll have a whole lot more. So our timeline will be meeting with RSP tomorrow to get some firm projections on what these numbers look like, so that the board can have those, the public can have those. We will have a zoning meeting on December 18th and 20th to go over projections. We'll then have another meeting on December 7th and 9th. Does that sound right, Ms. Williams? December 7th and 9th.
Dr. Sullivan, thank you. You said December 18th. I think you meant November 18th.
November 18th. Sorry, you're correct. November 18th and 20th. Thank you. November 18th and 20th. And then we will have another meeting, December 7th and 9th, I believe are the dates.
9th and 11th.
9th and 11th. I've looked at so many numbers today, it is, all right. So let me clarify. November 18th and 20th is our next board, scheduled board meetings. Those are to look at zoning projections for middle school and hopefully have a new model to go with. The community and parents will have about three weeks to review that, make recommendations to the board. Then the recommendation's going to be for the board to look at that at our work session December 9th, hopefully vote on that December 11th. Rob will be back with us at RSP to present kind of our new numbers to the, hopefully for a joint meeting on December 16th. So I was able to confirm that today. The next, from our current, just so that you have an idea of the changes. This area right here is supposed to go to Rocky Fork Middle. I'm going to recommend that we have that area go to Smyrna Middle. That's going to allow Rocky Fork Middle to go a little bit into the Poplar Hill zone. Poplar Hill's then going to be able to go into Blackman Zone a little bit more. Blackman Zone's going to be able to go into Rockville Zone. Then, in a little bit of a different, we're going to match pretty closely the downtown area with our high school zones. We are going to, we have hundreds upon hundreds of middle school students who, right now, all go to Rockville Middle in the Casein Lane area. We're going to split this area because there are so many kids between several of our middle schools, which we like to keep them together, but we also have this as a dual-zoned high school area, so they're not all going middle to high school together anyways. The other big shift is going to be Whitworth is going to come into the Christiana Zone, probably following. We will keep Savannah Ridge, and at least it's going to be my recommendation, Savannah Ridge and Indian Hills at Christiana and use Joby Jackson kind of as the cutoff. It's easy access to Whitworth Buchanan, and then go down Country Farm Road all the way down Rucker, Wayside, Christiana, Hoover's Gap, and kind of use that as the new cutoff for Whitworth Buchanan. That allows Christiana Middle to come pretty far into this portion of the more urban part of Murphysboro where Salem, Casein Lane is, to pick up students. And that also allows Whitworth Buchanan to pick up students to where, right now, on this projection, our smallest middle school is still projected to get smaller. And so we've got to fill some of those seats in that school. So that's kind of what we're looking at. I'll have a lot more information for the board, trying to utilize our seats. Happy to answer any questions, thoughts, anything you guys have. If you want to go in a different direction, I'm happy to go in a different direction. My only other option is to move portables that I know of.
Dr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
With these new projections, I know this is a lot of work because as much as I'm not a big fan of rezoning because I've been rezoning so many times. However, we cannot overlook the fact that this county's growing, development is happening all the time, and these subdivisions are popping up everywhere. So with these projections, and even with the rezoning that you are recommending to the board next time we meet, where do you think we need an additional middle school?
After this, we are going to either, we're doing a lot of work north. We're going to have to go south next. There's, there's, if you look at some of those other projections that they have that talks about, let me get to it real quick, about where, this is what we're trying to relieve some of that. We've relieved a lot of enrollment from Rock Springs Elementary. We're relieving enrollment from Rock Springs Middle. The Lee Road property is really going to help right over, let me make sure where I am, over here with a lot of that, probably a three-school complex eventually over there. But then you also have a lot of growth that is, here's the south side of the district where this is all going to be Whitworth Buchanan Middle School, Christiana Middle School, and then this is all Christiana Middle School and Rockville Middle School and high school. And so our middle and high schools are not going to be able to hold all of these students down there. So south is going to have to be next after we address the north.
And we have land in the Plainview area.
We have land for one school at Plainview.
Right.
We're going to need something else, and I would recommend on this side of 231.
Okay. But we don't have any land right now in that area.
Nothing, yes, we don't have. We don't have anything even big enough to build anywhere. We have, yes, that I know of.
Yeah.
We're going to need something over here for sure.
It's a gift that keeps on giving.
It is, but we are, I do want to give the board credit. We are much further ahead than we were this time, three and a half years ago.
And then with the high school, well, we'll talk about the high school later.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I spoke today with one of the aldermen and got some updated numbers from the west side of 24. So there's going to be 10 phases of that Arbor Ridge. Right now, the Waldron Road, the Twinning Station, there's going to be 12 buildings for apartments, 578 units and 54 homes. For Woodland Hills, when they finish that development, that's a smaller little area. It's going to be 85 houses. Mission Hills, which is kind of where we had looked at, all of it's Walden Road.
Okay. So I'm all like right here.
Yeah, all in that area. So Mission Hills is going to have 201 lots, so we need to make sure that.
For sure. Having as much room over there.
Yeah, that we put that in there because Rock Springs is already at capacity, as is middle, the middle school.
Do you like having that part east of I-24 that probably shouldn't be Laverne over to Laverne? Because right now, I had, being realistic, I was surprised that Rock Springs was all over here. Because right now, I had, being realistic, I was surprised that Rock Springs was all over here. I had no idea.
I didn't think that we had any Rock Springs on the east side of the, of 24.
I had no idea that this entire, like right across from the city hall was Rock Springs Middle. And it is right now. That surprised me.
Yeah, it needs to go back.
Yeah, it needs to, it needs to go back for sure.
Dr. Sullivan.
Yes.
I appreciate you working on this. I know it's, I know it's a lot and it's ever changing, so we can't project everything. My request would be, and I told you this, but just get this information out to the parents because we had community meetings and we went through this for several years. And some of them have already kind of set plans on what they expect. And now, I hate to say, there can be a little bit of a rug pull on some of them, but it's just the nature of where we're at. We're trying to fill up these capacity where we have it. But I just ask that we do a kind of a mass movement toward that, communicate.
Well, we'll have, of course, our district, we're going to ask our schools, and then we have, when are our yards, are your signs ready to?
Our signs are ready. We're putting them out tomorrow.
And so we'll put those all out, the schools have QR codes so that everybody can also scan as they, hopefully as they stop and don't drive by, but.
Awesome.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Only other area I forgot to mention, because I know this area is Blackman area, trying to match some of the Poplar Hill Elementary zoning is looking, and this part isn't the elementary, the other part is, but looking part of not a lot of students, but could be a lot of development, is north of Shores Road and Manson Pike going towards Poplar Hill because Poplar Hill is right here. So trying to relieve Blackman Middle by adding this part that matches the elementary zone up towards Poplar Hill by going down Manson Pike to Blackman. So that's one other area we're looking at. Alright. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Number seven, financial matters. Okay.
Alright, number seven, Fund 141, budget amendment. This amendment increases budgeted fiscal year '25, '26. Fund 141 revenue and expenditures to recognize TISA on behalf payments. These payments are funds generated for students under TISA but not issued to the LEA, which is a school district. They are paid directly to the state for specific items such as state portion of charter school payments, education savings account, individualized education accounts, and juvenile detention centers. TDOE requires LEAs to report these payments and their financial statements and will provide the amounts at year end. This is a budget neutral amendment and does not provide any net gain or loss to the general purpose schools budget. The amount of these budgeted entries is $4,017,240.
Any comments or questions?
Ms. Maxwell.
Ms. Rosales.
We have to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have properties.
Mr. Reed.
Mr. Reed, please.
We talked about some of this at the work session, but there's two property items on the agenda tonight. One is the McFadden property, another is just another property that's been become available in the county if we have any interest in it. On the McFadden property, I've given you a handout for each of you tonight, which is some sheets. I think some of the McFadden PTO people actually put this together. But you have the existing, on the first page, you have the existing school site that shows the McFadden Community Center adjacent to the school site. You ever see that? So that's the current property as it exists today. On the second page, you will see some of the parcels that they were talking about acquiring. These are the five that are under contract. You've got, the second page, you have the two small houses there. You go to the third page, you have three additional houses there. And these are small houses. The parcels of land, so really what you're paying for is the land, not the houses, because these houses would be torn down. And then the final page that you have in the presentation, the materials here has, shows the property as it's squared off and what it would look like once you get, if you acquire all five of these parcels. So you see a very square that takes up the entire block of property there. So you have all that additional land in the back that you could do something with at the school. So, so I just present that to you so you know what the properties are that we're kind of dealing with. I know the schools, I know the board members have not had a chance to look, maybe some of you have, but we haven't gone as a group to look at these school sites. What I was going to propose is if the board is so inclined, of course, it's up to the board to decide what you want to do with these. But if you're inclined to, to do so, what we could do is, is on both of these property items is post, postpone them to the next meeting and then arrange for a tour so we can get a bus set up to take all the board members to buy, to drive by and look at these properties. I did talk to Dr. Sullivan. He said we could do it as soon as next Wednesday. Of course, it gets dark early tonight, so it's dark as early as 5:00. So I was going to throw out, there may be 11:30 or 12:00 next Wednesday is a possible time. Trying to, I know people are working, so I don't know if that gives you a chance to leave your work during the day to do it or not. And that time may not work. If it doesn't work, let us know kind of what time would be better. But we do want to do it during the daylight, so you can see this during the daylight. And it does get dark at 5:00 now, so it needs to be sometime before, before 5:00. So, so with respect to both of these items, the property items of this one and the next one to come up next, what I would propose is that we get a bus time schedule that we all get together and go do a drive by to look at these properties together as a board. Historically, that's what we've done before we acquired property. I know it's always hard to get this number of people together for anything. So there's some board members who can't make it. We can arrange for them to go look at them independently or have their own time to go by and look at them if you choose. But I do think it is kind of good to have one common time that people look at these together to the extent we can get a good bunch of us together for that. So I don't know what you think about that, but I would throw that out there as an option for maybe next Wednesday, 11:30 or 12:00. And we can get a bus, we can either meet at the central office or if people want to meet on site and if it's quicker from where you're coming from to meet on site, we can meet on site. So, so I offer that to you. The immediate item, agenda item here is these five properties on, next to McFadden. We do have contracts from the sellers on those. If we want to, whenever we want to act on those, all those contracts provide for a 180-day inspection period with two 30-day extensions and basically gives us a free look. So we have time to look at those properties and decide whether or not they're feasible for the school site. You can do whatever kind of inspection and testing you want to do during that period. So you really have no obligation to follow through and close on them until you decide during the inspection period to do so and we give notice to close. So, so that's the, and all these are contingent on county commission approval for funding as well. So the, the three McFadden properties are not huge money and when you're talking about for, for land this day, all of them together is like $13,360,000. So the prices that are in the contracts today, the total of all five is $13,360,000. So, so I leave that for your discussion. If you guys want to do a bus tour next week, we can get it set up. And if Wednesday does not work, we can look at other days. I know we, some of them have the school conference for TSBA, I think Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So we're thinking Wednesday might be a good day for it. And I threw out lunch just thinking that might be more convenient for people who are working.
Any comments or questions? Yeah, Mr. Tidwell first.
Jeff, alright, so you said the price that's been negotiated is 1.3, 1.3, 100, I'm sorry, $13,360,000. Is the appraisals that are in here, are these recent?
Those appraisals are current tax appraisals on the tax rolls. So those are the Rutherford County Tax Roll Appraisals.
Alright, so.
Tax Roll Appraisals are typically low and do not reflect current market prices.
Yeah, so as part of approving this contract, approving it, it for us to do our due diligence, right? Just locking in the property. If we were to make that decision, then we would have it reappraised at market value to see where those values are at. Because there's, there's quite a chasm between the numbers on this paper and the numbers that they're asking.
The board, if the board wants to do so, you can get appraisals done.
Okay.
Ms. Maxwell.
Yes, Mr. Vaughn first.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and move on these five properties for McFadden. We're not going to do anything where the houses, but tear them down. So land is land and, you know, we talk about appraised value. It really doesn't matter what they're priced at. This is what these people say I'm going to sell them to you for. And I don't see any reason why we don't go ahead and vote tonight to move on these contracts. There's no reason to, to, to not move on them. These people are willing to buy them and we're going to tear the houses down and dirt's dirt. And so, you know, I want us to go ahead and vote on that tonight.
Second.
Mr. Vaughn's your second.
Jeff Reed, can you please tell us, who is representing the owners? The sellers.
I think one of the, one of the owners has a Realtor or some realty firm they had consulted with. Otherwise, the owners are being represented by themselves.
So all five are going to be representing themselves, by themselves?
Some of these are rental houses. So some of the people who own these houses are somewhat sophisticated real estate people. So are used to dealing with real estate affairs and hold, hold multiple rental properties in Murfreesboro. So, so the people you're dealing with are probably more sophisticated real estate people.
So in the disclosure of the contract, is there going to, is there going to be a real estate agent that's getting a commission? Who is that?
There are no commissions and payable under, under these. So that's one thing that's being saved because you don't have real estate agents you're being paying. There's no real estate agents in any of these deals getting, receiving a commission on either the school board side or the seller side.
Perfect. And.
I'm sorry, one property has one? For one, okay, there's.
Who is the property, the owner that has a real estate agent? Who is the real estate agent for that?
I think someone at Keller Williams was, I saw on one of the contracts, someone at Keller Williams.
Keller Williams, but that's not affiliation with Stan Vaught's?
No, it's no affiliation. Stan Vaught is not receiving any commission out of any of these deals.
And his company is not receiving anything?
Nor he get, they.
Okay.
There's no compensation at all towards Stan Vaught.
Okay, so I want to move forward as well in buying these contracts because all we're doing is just demolishing these houses. They, the, the PTO group met us, not met us, but the PTO invited the whole entire board back in October 2024 to meet with, to show a presentation that including every single member that was here, sitting here, and also some county commissioners. Not everyone showed up, but in that presentation, they're the ones who, the PTO proposed the idea of buying those five houses that are in the same vicinity of McFadden. And they said, why, why there was a need for that, to, to buy that. And they also showed us that new sketch of the new school that was going to give them more land so that they can stay in the property, so the school can stay in the same location and not having to move there. Plus, it'll give more opportunities for students in Rutherford County to have another choice school that the residents can apply for. And so, so that's where that idea was proposed. And then when we started talking about the five-year plan, there was a lot of movement in wanting to start something for McFadden so that we can get some type of ball rolling. And then in August, when we had that discussion, 21st, August 21st, well, the day before, during our meeting that we had as a work session, I had asked to get that sketch in the, of what, that was presented in the, in the PTO meeting, not the PTO meeting, that was presented in that informational meeting that the board was invited and the county commissioners were invited. And then we received that information on August 21st. And that was include, it included every single member that's sitting here on the board with the link to go to that. And so if you go to McFadden, which I have been, those houses, you can see, you can drive around it, around, around them and see the houses. As far as topography, it's in the same top topography as with the school because we already have something building, there's something, something already built. There is infrastructure already in there because we have a hookup for sewer electricity. Those would be the biggest reasons. As far as the road, there already is road access to it because it's on the street side. There may be, we maybe get asked to expand the, the street by the city, I don't know, because we're expanding. But really, what's going to help with this is that low location, if you go into McFadden and when you see the playground, it's right by the very busy street. So it's going to allow them, it's going to allow the playground to be moved behind the school. So it'll be a little bit more safer. So with that, for those reasons, I'm going to go ahead and move, well, I'm going to move forward buying the contracts. Plus, I looked into the policy that we had as far as site selection. And one of the things that it clearly stated is that, is that if we're going to buy something and that it needs to be in an area where it's been identified, where we are to buy these, buy, buy a property for that. And that has already been identified. And I know that we, the board did vote for Jeff Reed to move in the negotiation. But how many people are in your firm? How many other lawyers are in your firm working with you, Jeff Reed?
How many attorneys we have?
In your firm.
Like eight attorneys?
And then when you get overloaded with work and we have given you authority to do, you have the authority to make decisions in on behalf, which may include giving some of that work to one of your partners so that the, we can continue doing the process, continue doing the work because of the overload. And it's my understanding that the reason why Stan was, got involved, because he does have a real estate agent, is because he was approached, there was a conversation, he was approached by the principal and even by you to see if there was some way that we can look into committing the owners into buying these houses. So for those reasons, I want to move forward with buying the, buying the houses.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Mr. Tidwell.
Yeah, I've been to McFadden many times. I've got a lot of respect for Dr. Blair and PTO for the work that they've done as well, putting this together. I don't think anybody is doubting that these changes need to be made and this is not a great move for them. But we also got to be responsible to taxpayers and, you know, what you've handed out to us today, I understand is not the actual market value. But I, I would be willing to move on this because we're just doing our due diligence. We're not signing the contract. I would not be happy signing the contract when the homeowners are asking for double the amount of what it's appraised for. So I'd love to see what that comes back to. I would be asked that we request appraisals so that we can get that back and maybe go back to the negotiating table with a more realistic number in between. But with, with this just being permission to move forward on continuing the due diligence, I'll support that.
Yes, Ms. Sharp, did you?
Listen, there's no one on this board that doesn't think that you guys deserve it and that y'all need it. This map here looks so much bigger than the actual property because I did go out yesterday and look at it. So I can at least say that I laid eyes on it. And I saw your teacher all the way down at the four-way stop. I'm so thankful that the experience church allows you guys to use their parking lot to help y'all with coming into school and, and loading from school. That's such a blessing because it is a very narrow two-lane road. And I am for this, but I'm not for what, what is happening here. We've, I've been on this board, this is my eighth year. Before we've purchased any property, we as a board have gone to the property and looked at it. And I think it's derelict and our due diligence for us not to. So I'm a no vote, even though I support, I support the project.
Ms. Darby.
Mr. Reed, if we move forward with these contracts, you will be signing these contracts at the price that they are at, correct?
Well, the purchase price is stated in the contract. So that is the purchase price in the contract. And then you have the right to get an appraisal done if the board wants to get an appraisal done. If the appraisals come in lower than what the contract purchase prices are and you want to go back to the sellers and attempt to negotiate a lower price with the appraisals, you can do that. Of course, there's no guarantee the sellers will be willing to sell at what appraisal price you get. So that's when the negotiation comes through, comes in to see whether they're willing to come off the purchase prices or not. These are rental properties. And while these conditions, the houses are not, I'd say, the most pristine houses you've ever seen, they are generating income. So one of the things that kind of, you know, factors in the valuation of these houses is how much. how much rental income they're generating. So that's a factor that landlords will be familiar with that may not be necessarily reflected by the market appraisal on a cost approach basis. But all that's to say, if the, if the board decides to go forward with the contracts, you can do that. If you get appraisals done, the appraisals come in less than what the contract price is and the board says, well, we're not willing to pay the price that is in the contract because the appraisals came in less, that's a decision the board can make and you can go back to the sellers and negotiate with the sellers. And it'll be up to the sellers to determine whether or not they're willing to sell for a lower price than in the contract.
Okay, so the contract is written in a way that we are not locked into that price if the appraisal comes back less?
You can, you are locked...
I know we have the inspection period. I'm just concerned about the, the pricing portion of it. I just want to make sure that we can go back.
During the inspection period, you can go back and try to, if you have, if you want to try to renegotiate the deal, you can try to renegotiate the deal. If you can't get a number that you're willing to live with, then you can terminate the contract and then everyone goes on their separate ways and you don't, we don't close on the property.
Okay. I too agree with Mr. Tidwell and Ms. Sharp. I've been to McFadden, not actually inside the building, but on the exterior of the building many times. It's a fantastic school. The older schools are something I've been talking about for a couple of years, getting onto our schedule to get them renovated, rebuilt. So I'm in favor of us moving forward with rebuilding McFadden, absolutely. I do have concerns when we as a board aren't following policy because we set the example for our district and it says a lot if we're not following our own policy. So I, that has been my main issue with the way this entire thing unfolded. So I just want to be clear going on record that it has nothing to do with these houses, with this school, none of those things. It has everything to do with policy and making sure that we are handling things in the proper way according to our policy.
What policy, what policy is she talking about? What policy you, you talking about?
I don't have the policy number on hand, but the board voted to allow Mr. Reed to engage with those owners. We did not vote to allow Mr. Vaught to do that. We're responsible to the public. So when we as a board vote to authorize someone to negotiate on behalf of the board, that is the vote that the board has taken. None of us, not Ms. Maxwell, not Dr. Sullivan, not Mr. Reed, has the authority to go against what the board voted and do something different in place. If that were the case, there would be zero point in having a board doing anything.
Oh, we're not voting against what the board said. We didn't vote that Mr. Vaught couldn't say anything. We, we voted, we said, you know, Mr. Reed, yeah, you can do that, but we never said, hey, Stan Vaught, you can't do it. We never said that. There's no policy.
No, but we didn't vote for him to. We voted for Mr. Reed to. And as I stated at the previous meeting, we as board members, it is not our position or our job, you can talk to TSBA about it. It is, it is not good for board members to get involved in financial matters and contracts. And there is a policy that specifically states that board members are not to be involved in contracts.
I don't, I don't, I don't believe there's a policy.
Okay, well...
Ms. Maxwell? I will be very careful right now in accusing board members that they're getting involved in contracts because if we want to go there, we can go there.
Go there, Ms. Rosales.
So, so we can go there.
Go for it.
Let me say this, let me, let me...
There's a real estate agent other than Mr. Vaughn.
Jeff Reed, we authorized as a board for Jeff Reed to negotiate. However, Jeff, that also means that Jeff Reed can make decisions based upon what is, what is in the best interest of the board. And sometimes his workload can get very, very heavy. And there's been times where he's been authorized to do something, but he gives the work to someone in his partner, in his firm, so that the process can continue, so that it's in, so that the best interest of our board, of the board, we can still do the work. There, we're, you, the way this is coming out and saying, and saying that we broke policy, we didn't broke policy. It's, it's trying to make, create this narrative that there was something that happened behind closed doors with a board member and these property owners. It's already been stated. He's, no one is benefiting from this. The board, he, if anything, Stan Vaught can't speak to these owners. Why? Because he has real estate agent. I mean, he's a real estate agent and he has an active license. What is not allowed, which has happened, is that if you don't have a active license, it is unethical and you're violating Tennessee state ethical laws in real estate of going to talk about pricing and negotiations with an owner. Has that happened? Yes.
No, it has not. No, it has not.
Yes, it has.
No, it has not.
Yes, it has.
Please, one at a time.
Yes, it has.
You, Ms. Vaughn, did you have a real estate license? I discovered, yes, you do. It was on your disclosure form in 2024.
I do not have a real estate license.
You do have a real estate license.
No, I don't have a...
Order, order. Don't accuse me of something that didn't happen.
I'm not accusing anything.
Yes, you did.
I'm just saying that it has happened. Yes, it has. And if we want to get the paperwork out, we will. Please.
Hey, let me just say this. You've got, McFadden has a real issue with their property. We have real issues to contend with that are on the agenda about whether or not we want to proceed with these five properties or not. I think that's a relevant issue the board has to decide on. You guys can bait the process and all that later, but...
We have a motion on the floor.
You do have a lot of McFadden people here tonight?
And we have a second.
You have a real issue at McFadden that needs to be addressed. And what we need to know, the board wants to move forward tonight on it, or whether you want to go look at the properties first and then decide later or what you want to do on them. So that's the business matter that's on the agenda tonight.
Ms. Maxwell? We have a, yes, Ms. Sharp, I'll let you go, but we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. And after Mr. Tidwell speaks, we're going to vote. Go ahead, Mr. Tidwell.
I would just like to say that, you know, I'm looking at this as a singular issue, whether or not it makes sense. Obviously, I think it makes sense because of the need, but again, we're just entering into some due diligence here. I'm requesting on record an appraisal so that we can make sure that these numbers are a lot closer than they are currently. Currently, the appraisal of these properties based, and I understand it's not market value, but it's 706,350 and they are asking for one point, or 1,360,000, almost double. I feel like that is a bit excessive and I think we'll be able to find some middle ground in between there. You're right, it may not happen, but I would like, I'd feel more comfortable getting that information back. That's all I'm asking for and that is why I'm making the vote that I am tonight.
Okay. You call the roll, please. We have a motion on the floor to start the process to purchase the five homes at McFadden.
Mr. Tidwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosales?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
No.
Mr. Vaught?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Darby?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so the second item is a parcel property which I don't know if the school system wants or not. So is, is something being made available to the school if we want it for school purposes? So the sellers come to us and saying they would sell it to the school system if we have any interest in it. So this is the one, the Blackman area, the Dismukes property. You do have a contract you, tonight with you for, which, for the 85 acres that does have 180-day free look period as well with two 60-day, two 30-day extensions. So again, it's a contract that you have before you that you're not oblig, if you sign it, you're not really obligated to close until you go through the inspection period and get notice to close. So this is one the board has not looked at. This is a sizable amount of acres out there that's available in the Blackman area. I don't, there's been no determination made as whether we need this for a school, whether it's suitable for a school, but it's been available, made available to the school system if we have an interest in purchasing it. If we do have an, and I was going to suggest, like we've done with other large farms that have become available for us to go as a board and look at it sometime and to tour it. First, to decide whether you like the location, what the roads look like and to see what the land looks like. I have not been to this, to the land either to look at it myself. So, so I would suggest we possibly do that next Wednesday. And I would suggest 11:30 or 12:00 to see if that's available to people. If that time doesn't work and people have some other times that are better for them, I mean, we can talk about it. Again, it gets dark at 5 o'clock, so I think we need to go when it's daylight and it's not dark, so we can see the site. And people, if they want to meet at the site and drive from a separate location in the county, if you're coming from your work and it's not convenient to come to the central office first, we can meet you on-site at the, at the farm and look at it. But I do think you should probably look at this property before you move forward with it. I don't think you should move forward with it really without looking at it. And so I would suggest we do that next week and I don't know what, if any board members have comments on that, whether Wednesday works or doesn't work. But I'll throw that time out there just to give us something to work from.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Vaughn?
I'd just like my promotion, we move to go out and visit it next Wednesday before we make a vote on it.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Tidwell?
Mr. Reed, this is 85 acres, right? What is the price point on that? 8.5 million?
I'm sorry, what, it's a price point on it?
Yes. Is that, is that, I thought I read that, 8.5 million. So it's $100,000, $100,000 an acre?
Correct.
Dr. Sullivan, could you tell us when the, a timeframe of when the need might be for this particular property, please?
Next would be Lee Road property, then south. So within the next 10, 15 years, I would definitely, we're going to need something here if it develops, if...
Trends?
Yes, if trends hold.
Okay.
I like how Williamson joined when, I don't, I haven't been to this site either, though.
Sure. I, I mentioned this at the work session, I'm just going to belabor the same point, but we have the Popular Hill property, we bought the Beatty Farm, we have the Popular Hill, we put an elementary and a middle school there. And I understand this, this area is growing, but so is the rest of the county. Now we're buying, should be buying, we're in contract, due diligence area of the Lee property and it's going to be big enough to potentially hold, hopefully, what will be a high school, maybe potentially a middle school, some form of schools there. And we need those as well. And I, and I get that. And then now we're looking at, rather than going back down south, which Dr. Sullivan has alluded to, a need that we have from RSP as well and which I'm advocating for, rather than do that, we're going to have another property in the same area at $100,000 an acre. So to me, that doesn't make sense as the first upcoming, we're going to have another need before that need, so I'd rather focus on that because as we've had discussions here and as we've had discussions at our work retreat, we're about to put an ask out there for some money to the county commission. And it's no light task, but it is a need. Part of that need is going to be the funding, well, I think we're going to use the fund balance, going to ask them to use the fund balance for the Lee property. And then the high school, Trey, would you like to give us a ballpark figure on the high school? I think the last one that I heard was like 100, was it 180?
The building itself would probably be around 120 to 130 and then you would have to have any property that would be associated with it. You got to have the FF and E, you got site. So yes, it could be approaching 150 to 180.
All right. And, and then at least at the retreat, it was on Tuesday, we also talked about possibly putting a middle school there. Could you tell me what the price of a middle school would be?
We just did 67.
I'm going to say between 70 and 80, depending upon the timeframe that it's built.
I ain't, I ain't going to pull this back up and say, Trey, you said...
Yeah.
No, that's a, it's just, just an idea and it's a big ask. And I know the county has their own interests in the, the things that they're going to do. So my concern would be, let's go after the things that we absolutely need now. And I'm not saying it is completely unnecessary 10 years down the road, it may be necessary if trends hold, but as it sits now, it's not the need we have and that's why I wouldn't support it.
I think Trey hit it very well Tuesday. I think this would have been a great thing to have known about a year ago because it would have definitely helped. Do you have any, Mr. Reed, reason to believe that the Lee Road property is going to fall through?
No.
Which you mentioned Tuesday and I was the first time I'd heard that.
I expected the floor soon, so yes.
Okay. First time I'd heard that, so that was a little concerning. Okay.
That was a great question to ask.
Yes.
Any other?
Thing about it is, you know, we don't, this property, you know, there's not going to be, you don't get many chances to buy property in Rutherford County. And when opportunity comes, we know in the, in the future, we're going to have to have schools unless they put a, I'm full, sign at the county line. But we keep growing and growing and growing and we just buy for what we need right now. It's like Blackman Middle School is a good example. We built that school for what was needed at the time and it was built for 1,000 kids. Sixty years there, we were 1,200. Brock Vales, the same way, built that high school. And it ended up being the largest, one of the top two or three highest, biggest high schools in the state. So, you know, if we just buy for what we need now, we're going to get into that situation again. And then if we get in a situation where we can't buy any land, you think it's expensive now. You wait until that comes up. And we just need to keep our eyes open and be visionaries to look down the road a little bit and take advantage of the opportunities when they come. So, you know, we just need to really take advantage of everything we get, so.
I do think there is wisdom and I'm not trying to wishy-washy because that is something Williamson County to our west did a very good job of about 20 years ago. They bought land and so I think it's definitely prudent of us to continue to, to look and explore every piece that's brought to us because they don't have to look for land sites when they build new schools. They, they already have them. And so that's, that's something I wish we were in the position to do where unfortunately we're not.
I want to agree with that. It seems like since I've been on the board and COVID hit and it was awful, and for three years, we did absolutely nothing. It was like we were stuck in quicksand and everybody was like, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. And I'm not blaming them, but us not being able, we're still playing catch-up. We're just filling some, we're filling up schools as soon as we build them instead of thinking down the road and trying to be forward-thinking. And that's why I think every piece of property that they're willing to show us, we need to take a look at and really think about because just like you said, we may not need it for another eight, nine years, but it would be nice to have it. And so, I agree.
Yeah, we do have a motion and we have a second?
I'd like to say one thing. We need to go to the developers that are building these big neighborhoods and the, all these houses they're putting up. John Floyd gave Spring Hill, gave Spring Hill the property to build an elementary school. Now, we need to go to these contractors, they need to put a little bit, bit of the skin in the game because they're the ones that are benefiting from it. And so, I don't know how you do that, but we, maybe we can.
We did have a developer that is building south that, and the original plans had land donated for a school and somewhere between there and the approval at the county level didn't happen. So I don't, we're not on the planning commission, so I don't know where that went south, but the land for the school, the land for the school site is no longer there.
Can we look at it again?
It wasn't up to us, but it was originally a spot for a school.
Madam Chair? Yes, Ms. Sharp?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Vaughn, to your point, the policy needs to be changed at the municipality level because they're the ones that are building and letting the developers come in and causing the taxpayers more property taxes and more, having to build more schools. So the policies need to be changed in our cities to require the developers to give us some land or give us a discounted land. That needs, that needs to happen. And the IDB board needs to stop giving away taxes and charge for the taxes.
It'd be nice, we could meet with mayors of the, Laverne and Smyrna and Murfreesboro and just tell them.
They are working on that, so I want to give the, the five mayors credit. They brought this up at mayoral council, so I do want to give them credit.
Are they doing more and you're just talking about it? Are they going to do something to that?
Yes, yes, they do. Well, we met the first time and it was not my idea, so I want to give them credit for that.
So we have a motion on the floor. To visit the school, the Dismukes property. We have a second.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you state what the motion is again?
I was going to say, could you, the motion?
The motion is to visit the Dismukes property on Wednesday.
So this is just to visit it?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Darby?
I can't visit on Wednesday, but yes.
I can't visit on Wednesday, but yes.
Mr. Vaught?
Have a stay.
Mrs. Rosales?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Tidwell?
No.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxwell?
Yes.
Passes.
So we'll get, arrange a made for a bus to leave from here and I may get Ms. Williams to send out notices on that. And if you want to meet on site, we'll send you an address and people can meet on site.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Thank you for all your hard work. Next we have director's update.
I'm good.
Okay. I don't think you've said that in a long time.
Hey, there's no Mountain Dew over here, so you must be doing good.
Looked at so many numbers today with zoning, I'm good.
And general discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to say that, I'd like to thank Mr. Reed and Mr. Vaught for the work they did to get this, all this land and everything done. I mean, it's a lot of effort put out and I appreciate everything they've done and their expertise. So thank y'all for, y'all be done.
Dr. Sullivan's got something to say?
I did want to, this one, so I want to congratulate Mr. Vaughn, he is being inducted into Oakland High Schools. Down here, he is being inducted into the Hall of Fame at halftime today.
What happens when you hang around a long time, things happen.
Wouldn't happen to a, a better, more deserving gentleman.
Thank you.
Any other? Yes, yes, Mr. Tidwell.
We have some middle school principals here, so we appreciate you guys here. We also have a bittersweet moment. I'm losing one of my middle school principals to the new Popular Hill Middle School. So, but congratulations to Dr. April Sine for that.
Excellent. Any others?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Ms. Brenda Bryant, thank you for coming anyway, even though you were not able to do the prayer. If I, we would be here for another hour if I talked about all the things that she's done for our community, but she does have the blessings box and her ministry is keeping people in their homes. So she works with affordable housing and some other things. So thank you for coming. I'm sorry about the traffic today. So if anybody wants the addresses for the blessing boxes, I'll put them out on my Facebook. On Saturday, from 9:00 to 12:00 at Champies in Murfreesboro, we're going to do a food donation drive for our Atlas program. So you'll see some familiar faces, there'll be, there's a bunch of people that'll be there. Y'all can just drive through the parking lot and I'll put up the needs and things that Ms. Johnson has put out for.